We apologize for the delay. We had a extended executive session and then my laptop was a little slow at letting me into the meeting, but we are here. But the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Robert Landeran is absolutely excused. Please rise for the pledge of I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Thank you. I want to take a moment to remember you longtime Madison resident over the past few weeks. Andre Piggory died on September 19th after long illness. Andre was born April 12th, 1953, to the late Joseph Piggory and Agnes Hayes. He graduated from Madison High School in 1971, where he was a quite a wrestler, three years ahead of me at Madison High, and his reputation was known by all. He four years earned a district champion in 1970. He was also a resident of the Rexford Tucker Apartments, the senior housing on Tatooi Theory for the last couple of years. He was dedicated member of the First Baptist Church, singing in the choir and unity choir. He also served as a co-leader of the men's ministry. Also Francis Romano, a lifelong Madison resident, passed away peacefully at her home on September 18th. He was 95. She was predeceased by her husband, Ralph. Well, she was well known for baking pies, cakes, and Italian Christmas cookies to share with friends, relatives, and businesses in town, especially Madison Pharmacy and Lakeland Bank. And Herb Vogel, most recently of Sarasota, Florida, but a longtime Morris County resident, but he was the former Madison Borough Attorney, I believe, in the 1970s, died in on September 10th. And also Finn Bar Core died on August 18th, born in County Avon, Ireland, on July 25th, 1935. In 1979, Bishop Ruttermer asked him to become pastor of the St. Vincent Martyr Church in Madison. Finn Bar asked why he was being appointed to a parish that was 60% Italian descent and he still had a strong Irish accent. Bishop answered that he was the right person for the job, and he had lived on Cape Cod since 2004. Let us take a moment to remember Andre Piggory, Francis Romano, Herb Vogel, and Finn Bar Core, and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends that they leave behind. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the executive minutes of September 13th, 2021?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Harry's and a motion for the regular minutes of September 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, welcome all. Again, I apologize for our delay. Sometimes we try to fit too many potatoes in the bag. And as you know, we are still virtual and we will be virtual for at least the next meeting. That's the October, Wednesday, October 13th meeting. And we will assess the second October meeting based on where the COVID transmissions are with the Delta variant. But if it continues to level off, we'll be back in person at that point. And with a live video feed. In the meantime, as always, a reminder, continue to wear your mask when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained. And if you are not vaccinated, please take care of it now so you can care for yourself and other loved ones. I want to congratulate Sandra Liscari, lifelong Madison resident and member of our Board of Health for being named to NJ Biz 2021 Best 50 Women in Business list. So congratulations. Sandy, please congratulate her. And it was amazing to see the turnout for Carmen Toto's visitation and funeral service. It was noted that there were over 1,500 who attended the attended the service online, seen it virtually. So this is a testament of what Carmen meant to our community. As I've been saying to a couple of people recently, you know, Carmen may have been known for one season, but he truly was Madison's man for all seasons, and we truly miss him. On Saturday, September 18th, the First Baptist Church and Madison Police Department hosted a block party behind the Civic Center. Great time was had by all, especially with the water balloon toss and water balloon fight between the children and some of our officers. So it was a great integration there. And I had a mighty fine time flipping lots of burgers and cooking up the storm. And this past weekend is extra special and pretty interesting because I actually presented two proclamations for 125th anniversaries. On Friday, I presented the Madison Golf Club with a proclamation and on Saturday honored the Thursday Morning Club. And on the Thursday Morning Club, hopefully you've seen the banners downtown that give you some background on all their accomplishments on one of the oldest women's clubs in the country. This includes such things in Madison as establishing our health department, our shade tree management board, multiple friends groups, such as Friends of the Shade Tree and other groups, creating childcare in schools and nursery school, adult daycare, and the list goes on and on. And the Madison Golf Course, I, you know, mentioned that the preservation of beautiful open space that makes up their nine-hole golf course. And for those that don't know the history of George Yaman, who was a congressman from Kentucky, and if you would see the movie Lincoln, you will see an actor jump up and cast the deciding vote to abolish slavery. So it is an amazing story. So George Yaman left Kentucky, settled in Madison, and was one of the founders of the Madison Golf Club. In fact, it was, the meeting was held at his home. So it is an amazing connection. And as Jim Burnett will tell you, he is now is in the Hillside Cemetery, which is a Presbyterian cemetery right on Main Street. So amazing connection. And on Saturday, I also attended the ribbon cutting for Fairleigh Dickinson, their new athletic field. Very impressive facility. I invite you to take, stop by and take a look at it. I think they did an amazing job. And they have promised to continue to work with the neighborhood if there's any issues that come up. Of course, we'll be hearing more shortly as Bottle Hill Day is back its coming weekend. And my only role is I have ordered, written an executive order that demands the exact same weather that we had this past weekend for this coming weekend. Had a couple of proclamations to present, and I want to bring up our first recipient, our very own Carmella Vitale, besides being a former, or great former councilwoman, is also a cancer survivor. Bring up Carmella. There, there. She was, there she is. Carmella, it's great to see you on screen. Okay, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the Borough of Madison values the health of all its citizens, and whereas beginning in 1985, October has been designated as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas a lifetime risk for development breast cancer is one in eight for women and one in 833 for men. And whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer diagnosed in women and ranks as second, second as a cause of cancer death in women. And whereas, with routine mammogram screening and follow-up testing, breast cancer can be detected early when it can be more effectively treated. And whereas there's more than 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States, including women still being treated. And whereas because of COVID-19 pandemic, routine mammograms declined by 90% in 2020, making it critical to schedule those appointments now. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in recognition and support of the patients and families and professionals leading the fight against breast cancer, encourage Madison residents to recognize that routine screening and early detection can save lives. Carmella, I'd like to present this to you and say a few words.
I got it.
There we go.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So I just have a few words. I promise I won't stay, I won't keep you too long. I just like to extend my thanks to the mayor and the council on behalf of all the women and men who have survived this disease. Over the years, there's been great strides in research to find a cure for breast cancer, but we still need to ensure that along with the research, we have the resources and education that are available to everyone. Also, the best whereas in this proclamation is the sentence, there are more than 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. I am one of those survivors. Hopefully, when this proclamation is read next year, that number will increase by a huge amount. Again, I want to say thank you to all of you for bringing the awareness to all of our citizens to encourage them to go out and have routine screening and early detection. Thanks again. Appreciate it. And I'm going to add it to my wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmella. Great to have you join us. Take care. All right. And now we will bring up Claire Whitcomb to accept our Energy Efficiency Day proclamation. There you go. Welcome, Claire. And this is being efficient. We are, I have the, I have the only copy because we don't want to print too many copies and not be efficient in taking care of our earth. So whereas energy efficiency continues to be the cheapest, quickest, and cleanest way to meet our energy needs and reduce utility bills for residential business and industrial customers. And whereas, energy efficiency can make, also make our homes and workplaces healthier, safer, and more comfortable. And whereas smarter energy reduces the amount of electricity we need to power our lives, which helps avoid power plant emissions that can be, that can harm our health, pollute our air, and warm our climate. And whereas cutting energy, cutting energy waste saves US consumers billions of dollars in utility bills every year, up to $500 per household from applying to efficiency standards alone. And whereas implementing energy efficiency and other clean energy policies, programs can help boost the economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move toward a sustainable future. And whereas a resident of Madison can continue to contribute to our energy efficiency efforts by learning about and participating in our Home Energy Audit Program, SEAL Power. And whereas a national network of energy efficient groups and partners has designated the first Wednesday in October as the fifth annual Energy Efficiency Day. Now therefore, I, Robert Conley, Mayor Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim October 6th, 2021 as Energy Efficiency Day. There you go, Claire, if you want to say a few words.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for making this really important proclamation. Energy Efficiency Day invites universities, governments, corporations to join in and offer proclamations like this. And so we're joining so far 817 organizations and municipalities, and we'll be on the Energy Efficiency Day Facebook page and all that kind of thing. And for Madison, this is, is pretty critical because 66% of our carbon footprint comes from the built environment, and we have a lot of old housing stock. And we'll be sending out tips and press release to tell you what you can do, but basically doing simple things like ceiling leaks around chimneys and recessed lightings, they're really leak a lot of energy. And sliding heat guards under your doors, you can save up to 20% on your heating costs. So there's a lot of bang for your buck in just doing some simple measures. So thank you very much. I'm proud of Madison for being a leader on this.
Bob, you're needed there.
Yeah, thank you. I said some of the best things I ever did right there. Sorry. Claire, thank you very much for taking the time to accept this and appreciate your leadership, also sharing some great, quick and easy tips that our residents can do right away, especially as we're coming into the winter season. All right. And now we move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Acting Chief Missia at the Police Department, members of the Madison Police Department began their mandatory training on use of force scenario-based training to be completed by the end of 2021. This training incorporates two of the premier training programs in the country, ICAT, Integrated Communications Assessments and Tactics, and ABEL, Active Bystander for Law Enforcement. The new training will be scenario-based and will use real-life situations to reinforce the key principles of the new use-of-force policy, including the need to de-escalate critical and strategic decision-making tactics to reduce or eliminate the need of to use force and intervention to prevent other officers from improper behavior. Secondly, Christian Redinger, a graduate student and criminology major at FDU Madison, has started an internship with the Police Department. Christian is also a member of the FDU football team. He will be working primarily in records on Wednesdays and will also do occasional ride-alongs. His internship will conclude in December, and he will be getting college credits upon successful completion. The Traffic Safety Bureau, in conjunction with the DPW Road Department, replaced the faded stop signs in the Fairwood section of town. New speed limit signs were also installed on Morris Place. The Traffic Safety Bureau urges all motorists to drive below posted speed limits, especially in areas where children are present. And finally, the Madison Police Department, Traffic Safety Unit, and Community Relations Unit have been planning with borough officials and the Madison Downtown Development Commission to make Bottle Hill Day safe, special, and safe for all present and involved. We hope to see everyone out this Saturday, October 2nd, and please stop by our Madison Police Department and Madison PBA 92 tables to say hi to our officers. From Chief DeRosa at the Fire Department, all fire department ground ladders were tested and passed their annual testing requirements by an outside agency. Volunteer fighters are desperately needed. If you reside in Madison or within two miles of our borders, are in good physical and mental health, and wanting to get involved in the community, please consider joining as a volunteer with the Fire Department. For more information about the requirements on how to join, please go to www.madisonfd.com. And finally, the Fire Department is sponsoring an antique fire truck show during the Bottle Hill Day event. It will be in the train station parking lot from 10 until 3:00. All are welcome to stop by and see fire truck history. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Kelly.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. A quick reminder to our residents that the senior freeze application deadline is November 1st. Any seniors who have not done so should bring their forms into the tax office by November 1st. And then our CFO and Borough Administrator continue to work with department heads on their 2022 budgets, and they've been asked to keep those budgets flat. And they're also working with the Borough Engineer and other, and the department heads on a five-year capital plan. And that's it, Mayor, for tonight.
Very much. Now, Public Works and Engineering, and also covering health for Bob Landeran, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. For Department of Public Works, DPW staff provided assistance to Milburn after Hurricane Ida, helping clear flood debris in their commercial district. To assist the work of the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, DPW mechanics have now taken on the added responsibility of maintaining and repairing the MVAC ambulances at no cost. The quarterly jetting of sewer lines in low-lying areas in the commercial district has started. This process helps us keep the sanitary system in good condition and avoids blockages and backups into private property. DPW has inspected and serviced all leaf equipment in anticipation of the start of leaf pickup throughout town. Residents are encouraged to put their leaves in disposable bags for pickup at the curb by our yard waste collector. Free bags will be available for residents at the DPW garage on John Avenue and in the Borough Clerk's Office at Borough Hall. For the Engineering Department, Marilyn Garaguso began work on June 7th and stopped work September 10th after the lower staircase concrete was placed. Certain construction changes have been processed to date, which require approval since they request both additional cost and time extension to the contract. The trustees of Hartley Dodge Memorial have also requested involvement and assistance. The next phase of construction will involve resetting granite stair treads on the upper stair foundations in the sand and mortar base. Then the upper plaza granite pavers will be reset. Please note all general public access to the municipal building continues via the West Wing courtroom ramp for the duration of the project. New topic, Seffalian contracts. Seffeli General Contract continues to work on miscellaneous sidewalk improvements in Madison. Paver resets downtown and several driveway aprons have been improved in the central business district. Crosswalk ramp and curb replacement projects are also being accomplished. Montana Construction mobilized for an emergency response to debris buildup in the culvert between Keep Street and Kings Road across the YMCA and New Jersey Transit Rail properties. Initial debris, initial debris removal has been completed, and coordination with New Jersey Transit Rail is in process, progress, in hopes of completing the cleanup and repairs within both properties. Several locations where stormwater culverts, inlets, and grates were impacted during the tropical storms over the past month are being investigated for repairs and improvements. For the Environmental Commission, the Madison Townwide Yard Sale was held on Saturday, September 25th. Sale listings raised funds for Greater Swamp Watershed Association. The MECS recommends that those interested in sustainable shopping, check out the Madison Swap and Share Facebook group. It has 2,100 members and approximately 30 posts a day. Everything is free and borrowing is encouraged. If extra chairs or bike racks are needed, fellow residents typically help out. Fellow residents, we help out. Okay, that's, that's, that's all for that. Now for the Health Department. As the Delta variant remains the major concern in New Jersey, Madison reports 35 confirmed cases of COVID-19 since September 1st. Eleven of those cases or 31% were vaccinated. More than 82% of Madison adults are fully vaccinated. Remember, vaccines remain the best way to prevent or reduce the severity of disease for all COVID-19 infections, including those caused by known variants. Given the current COVID-19 activity level, additional mitigation efforts such as wearing masks in indoor public settings, especially those, those that are crowded or where the vaccination status of others is unknown, is highly recommended. Last week, the FDA and CDC finalized recommendations for certain populations to receive boosted doses of Pfizer vaccine. You are eligible if you received your last dose of Pfizer vaccine six months or more ago, and you are 65 years or older, you live in a long-term care facility, or are 18 and older with certain health conditions, or are 18 and older in a job with an increased risk of contracting COVID-19. If you fall into one of these categories, contact your healthcare provider to see if a booster shot is appropriate for you at this time. For those receiving Moderna and J&amp;J vaccines, the FDA and CDC will be releasing guidelines in the near future, or if boosters are appropriate for certain populations. While boosted doses can provide additional protection for those most vulnerable, the best way to continue to impact the trajectory of the pandemic is for those who have not yet begun their vaccination course to get the first dose as soon as possible. Visit rosenet.org for updates on New Jersey COVID-19 vaccination program testing and other pandemic guidance. On another note, plans are underway at the Madison Health Department for our annual flu clinics. More information will follow. Whether or not you receive your flu shot from the Madison Health Department, all residents are encouraged to get their annual flu shot this fall, unless otherwise the vaccine is available.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And now Community Affairs, Ms. Cullen.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is to follow up from what Maureen said. The Downtown Development Commission has Bottle Hill Day this coming Saturday from 10 to 5, as well as the Madison PBA car show. So come down. Hopefully, Bob, your executive order, order nice weather will happen, and we'll have a gorgeous day and hope to see everybody there. Thanks.
And now, since you reinforced my executive order, the pressure really is on me. So thank you. And now Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department reports that on September 14th, the department was called to Woodland Road for fire on the primary lines caused by a lightning strike. The crews shut down the circuit to make the necessary repairs, and full power was restored in 30 minutes. The department also installed a new pole transformer and LED streetlight on the corner of Morris Place and Woodside Road. The department continues to install LED streetlights, and the utility is also working closely with the light post manufacturer on a solution to convert our downtown Victorian-style post lights to LED lamping while maintaining the same warm glow. On that note, you'll notice we're introducing ordinance tonight to appropriate funds for retrofitting the Victorian-style streetlights for LEDs, which will reduce maintenance and energy costs. The Electric Department performed manhole maintenance and installed new sump pumps, and Burlington Safety, a specialty subcontractor, performed required safety testing on our five bucket trucks. And you may notice electric crews are out performing tree trimming after hours. From the Water Department, the annual fire, hydro, and water main flushing program is in progress during business hours for the next four weeks. Additionally, in the next week or so, flushing in higher traffic areas will be conducted at night. While hydro flushing typically does not interrupt water service, residents may notice a temporary drop in water pressure while crews are working in the area. There's also the possibility that water may become temporarily discolored. This is normal, and the discolored water does not pose a health hazard. If discolored water occurs, simply run the cold water for a few minutes until it clears. The Water Department continues to replace outdated water meters with new meters that have automated, automatic readers. If anyone is interested in having their water meter updated, please call the Madison Water Department at 973-966-7330 to schedule an appointment. And lastly, the Water Department reminds us that now lawns are dormant, the dew point is high, and the need for watering lawns with sprinklers has passed. At this time, it's a waste of our natural resource, our drinking water in town, and they ask all residents to please shut off their automatic lawn sprinklers for the season. That's all for utilities.
Thank you very much. And now on to Communications and divisions.
Others have been unreceived, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to our first of two invitations for discussion. Remember, for those that attend often, and for those that are here for the first time, this one is limited to certain topics. If you have other topics outside the ones I'm about to outline, you may comment on that coming up after our ordinance is for hearing. So if you want to comment on an ordinance for hearing, it's when we open the hearing for the particular one. If you want to comment on an ordinance for introduction, that can be done on the second invitation for discussion. And these are the items you can comment on. We're going to have from our Business Development Director, Lisa Ellis, we're going to have a Commercial District business update. And these are the following resolutions that you may comment on. Resolution 247 is authorizing an agreement with telecommunication consultant service, VCOM, for the beginning to work on designing the radio system that we will be installing. And that was, we have the ordinance for hearing, and this is the hiring of the consultant. Resolution 248 is approving additional one-year moratorium on annual fee increases for parking permits. This is recognizing that we are still well below the parking demand that we typically have, and so we are freezing the parking rates for another year. And we're also to utilize the available parking. This will authorize a non-resident commuter parking permit for 2022. This is just a 2022 action, and we'll review those next year. Resolution 249 is authorizing special event period for use of public parking lot number one for the Rotary Club for shredding event on October 23rd. Resolution 250 is use of Dodge Field on October 15th by Tori J. Sabatini Tito. Resolution 251 is appointment of Sergeant Greg Pirelli as acting lieutenant in the Police Department effective tomorrow. And Resolution 252 is appointing Sergeant Sean Pumpstead as acting lieutenant in the Police Department effective tomorrow. Resolution 253 is appointing Julian Morales as sergeant in the Police Department effective tomorrow. Resolution 254 is a Resolution 254 is a delivery driver's permit for travelers' taxi and limousine for 2021. Resolution 255 is confirming membership of Constantino's Office in the Madison Hoes Company number one as a volunteer. Resolution 256 is the appointment of Christopher DeRosa at the position of laborer in the Public Works Department. This is filling a vacant position. Resolution 257 is appointing Eduardo Ramirez Calves to the position of laborer in the Public Works Department for another vacancy that is being filled. Resolution 258 is authorizing change order request of $139,224.26 to, for Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza project, that's the plaza, and that's available through the capital account. Resolution 259 is approving salary increase for Thomas Tibiassi III. He's a part-time position. And it's moving their salary to be competitive with its current salaries from $14.57 an hour to $20 an hour. Resolution 260 is approving raffle license application for Tori J. Tito. And Resolution 261 is requesting local government services to approve an insertion of item of revenue in the budget for the, for this year, 2021. This happened when we received a grant. So that will be inserting a $1,610, well, the miscellaneous and appropriating $8,262.50. And Resolution 260, R262, which will be read into the record and discussed separately, is authorizing a vendor hosting a beer tasting at the Bottle Hill Day. But you may, you may comment on any of those resolutions or the downtown District Business Update Report. You wish to comment any of those, please click on the hand or if you're on the phone, star nine. Again, as you are recognized, state your name and address. And for this round, you must then also state your, the, the agenda item you are commenting on or the resolution. And I'll ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes, but you will have an extra grace period. We'll stop you at four. And Tom Harlan-Pudis, we will bring you up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Tom Harlan-Pudis, 27 Palmeroy Road. And looking forward to hearing the comments on the resolution that's not on the agenda that I printed about the beer tasting on Bottle Hill Day. Hopefully, that's something that a lot of us can participate as a substitute to the regular beer garden, which, which you couldn't really host this year. I, I have a comment and then more of a question than a comment on Resolution 258, 2021. This reads as a change order, which from my interpretation, a change order means that it's an additional cost to the project. It's $140,000 that you're taking out of our capital account from what you said, Mayor. Although I heard Mr. Hoover, I thought, say earlier that there was some discussion with the Hartley Dodge trustees for some participation in some part of the plaza. But maybe you'll elaborate, Mayor, after I'm done asking my questions and making my comments. You know, this project's already costing the borough a lot of money. And $140,000 would probably be enough to pay for the pickleball courts and basketball courts, which I assume are still on the agenda. And I'll ask you about that later on when you open up the invitation for general discussion on topics. But I would like to know a little bit more about how we could go over $140,000 on this project. And I want to know if we are approaching the Hartley Dodge trustees to participate in this. I mean, they, they are responsible for maintaining the characteristics of Hartley Dodge Memorial to the condition where they were when the building was originally built. We could have just replaced the front plaza with pavers and they would have had to come up with the rest of the money to restore it to the condition that it was when it was built. And we all know that that's their charter. So I'd like to get some comment from you because this is a lot of money where we've talked multiple times about our, our concern that there's going to be tax appeals or reduced revenues to the borough. So to spend this much money now when we're in a pinch, still, still in the COVID situation with the borough residents, the state, the country, it's a lot of extra money. So I appreciate whoever is responsible for this to just shed some more light as to what's going on here. And I think that's about it for these resolutions. All the other ones look great. I'm glad that you're bringing a Greek to the fire department. Hopefully, he'll do more than just bring in some good food for Max, for the rest of his peers. And the other appointments sound great, too. So then thank you, everybody, for your presentations on all your committees. It sounds like there's a lot of good stuff going on in town with all of our different borough departments.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Tom. And so I'll, I'll ask either Ray or Jim to comment on the clause for the, or outline the clause for the change orders and the source of funding.
Well, maybe I can take it, Mayor. The Hartley Dodge trustees have been very generous funding, providing funding towards the plaza project. They've engaged a lighting design consultant, independent of the borough, at their expense and are committed to spend approximately $300,000 to implement an exterior lighting plan that will be state-of-the-art for the building. The change order, there's a $57,000 item, which includes adding electrical conduit. It was not, it was not part of the base contract work that was given to Merrill and Garaguso, and they've agreed as well to fund that. So it won't be taxpayer dollars, 57,000 of 139,000. The other major items in terms of the change orders, we noticed after recent rainstorms that there was significant pooling of water, which we think is a problem that once we put back the granite pavers, there's water underneath and then you get the freeze thaw cycle, which imbalances the granite pavers, which defeats the whole purpose of creating a safer walking surface for visitors to the building. So we've expanded the base contract work to include a drainage component that wasn't in the original recommendation from the architect. And then there's also one additional lighting bollard, which we think increases pedestrian safety, which is $16,000. And the other, I think, significant change is when the initial pavers were moved, the architectural plans showed them meeting flush with the knee walls. And when we actually start to remove those pavers along the walls on each side, it turns out that the pavers actually didn't just meet, they actually went under the walls. So we had to remove the knee walls on both sides of the main entrance, which was not part of the base contract work. So that's the bulk of what's being changed, but those were unforeseen conditions. And one less unforeseen condition is when the stairs were removed, there were significant voids that had to be filled with fill under the staircases. In those days, they didn't put actual footings underneath. So our architect and engineer recommended that we fill those voids and actually create a much more stable foundation, which will be safer. And hopefully, we won't have to do these steps again for another 100 years. So those are the major changes. And we think the building's worth the investment. It's been here since 1934. And this is probably one of the things you do every 40 or 50 years, and it's worth making the investment to get a good product.
We certainly can't go back and do, do these things afterwards. So we got to get it right this time. All right, anyone, anyone else in the public want to comment on the resolutions? Please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we now move on to our agenda discussion. Then we'll promote Lisa Ellis to present the Commercial Business, Commercial District Business Update. Welcome, Lisa. Thank you for taking the time and doing this presentation. Just a quick little background, Deb can add anything else, but Lisa did a great presentation to Rotary. We asked her to adapt some of that to provide a update to the council and the public. Deb, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think Lisa's got a good presentation set, so it's all yours, Lisa.
Yeah, we'll see if it, if it survives the retread on this. I'm going to share my screen. Right now. Okay. I don't know. I'm used to having Michael do this. They want to do. So what I'm going to give it my best shot. Okay, as was noted, I gave this presentation at a Rotary Club meeting at the end of July. So I apologize to those of you who now will have to hear it again. There hasn't been too much changed in it. But as an overview, in early July, after, you know, kind of jumping through a lot of different things with COVID over the last 18 months, I thought it would be a good idea to survey the businesses. While I didn't get the, the response I wanted, and I probably will run it again at, at some point later this fall, it was representative, I believe, of our overall business community breakdown. As you can see from this, it was like 40% retail, 22% healthcare, and the rest divided between entertainment, entertainment, construction, professional services, real estate, et cetera. Predominantly, the responders were businesses with one to 19 employees, which probably is pretty representative of our business community overall. A series of questions were asked. The, sort of asked them to reflect on their experiences throughout the pandemic. You will be able to see, and I've done this in all of the questions, highlighting the responses with the highest percentage. It should be self-explanatory, but I'll go over it a bit. The first one was how are, how were your operations impacted by COVID? And I think these things are reflective of what was seen everywhere, probably in the world. Hours of operation were adjusted, supply chains were interrupted. That's still ongoing in many cases, and actually, for some reason, lately, becoming worse. They had experienced decreases in sales, especially early on, and they had to restrict their spending on inventory, et cetera, due to the ongoing uncertainty. And then they were given a series of responses on how the pandemic affected your business. You know, you can see almost 60% experienced temporary shutdowns, there was no choice. A lot of everything was locked down. They experienced employee absences due to sickness, childcare, et cetera. They faced administrative challenges. That was the bulk of, of the concentration of responses. This was a, this was, I thought, a good news that they were asked if they thought their risks, that there was a risk their businesses would shut down either now or in the future. And luckily, 85% felt that that would not happen, which is, which is a very, very good news for, for Madison and our local businesses. So then we asked them what they've done to address some of the ongoing issues with COVID and mitigating and how best to mitigate risks. You know, mostly centered around communication, the obvious hand sanitizer for staff, sanitizer for customer use. I think this will be something ongoing, probably forever. Increased cleaning, et cetera. That one wasn't, was not too profound, rather, I thought, obvious. And then we asked them if they adopted any of the following strategies to cope. And obvious answers here as well, increasing marketing efforts. And a lot of them switched to online sales platforms. And I was very impressed. A lot of businesses who, who were not super tech savvy in the past managed to adapt very quickly and adapt online sales platforms. And I think that that really helped them, that ability to move quickly helped them to, to get through. And then many of them, and thankfully, there were many different opportunities for relief through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, the Federal Small Business Authority, and some hyper-local grants. As you may recall, we, the Madison Main Street Foundation, sponsored the Madison Small Business Recovery Grant, where 54 businesses received grants ranging from like 20, the high 20, 2,700 to 43 and change. They, you also generously offered them utility rebates and for, at $400 a business, over 150 businesses participated in that. Through the state, I don't have, oops, it gets me every time. The grant program, there were grant programs, et cetera. And especially the COVID assistance grant, the first, well, and this is actually a cumulative total for phases one through four, over $1 million made its way to Madison from that program. And, you know, this was an interesting grant that the Flag the Frontline Appreciation Group of Chatham and Madison was able to, to get $360,000 grant from that specific program, which of course then was used to buy meals for frontline workers, et cetera, from our local restaurants. So that money too made its way to our local restaurants. At the federal level, over 332 entities were able to access the PPP loans, which most are eligible or were eligible for forgiveness, totaling a lot of, over $28 million, made its way here to Madison. Then you can see the, in New Jersey, I don't have the Madison breakdown. Like over $7 billion for the disaster assistance loans. And this is a little update on this one, the last one, the Restaurant Relief Fund. Though I still haven't been able to find a really accessible database, at least seven Madison restaurants accessed the Restaurant Relief Fund before that money ran out. I think what this says is that, you know, we have a lot of really smart and savvy business owners who were able to move quickly and access these programs. I regularly sent them emails every time a new program came online. And, and I hope that, that helped, that bit of communication helped make sure that they didn't miss an opportunity. And I hope that that helped, that bit of communication helped make sure that they didn't miss an opportunity. So this is another, I think, bit of good news. And it was how, we asked how is your business doing now that restrictions are lifted on a scale of one to ten, ten being the highest? As you can see, for the most part, the range is in the five to eight, with seven being the highest. I think, all things considered, that's a very positive response. And we'll check back in, like I said, I'll check back in later this fall with them and see see where they are. Since I did this presentation, we have had two restaurants, food establishments close. And it's hard to know if, you know, that, from a, I think they were impacted by a variety of things. COVID certainly didn't help. But I don't think that was the primary driving force behind those closures.
Lisa, you froze at one point, how many closed?
Two, just recently.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I would say that overall, we are, we are doing very well, probably better than a lot of towns. I think what helped us is that Madison doesn't have a lot of big national brands that may have faced challenges. We have a lot of wonderful, small mom-and-pop businesses that could weather this a little bit differently. They weren't, you know, some of the, you know, retail has been facing its own challenges over the last couple of years. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of the national brands have closed and reduced their footprints, you know, from Macy's to some of the smaller, I mean, you can hear it, it's still ongoing. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond now is reducing their footprint as well. So those, those challenges aside, I think who we are helps us going forward. And as you can see, there's we have had, this is from December of 2019, we have had a, any number of brand-new businesses move into town. And, you know, pretty, on a pretty regular basis, we have interests, I have people reaching out, et cetera. So overall, I think we are doing better than anyone could have hoped. Now, we also asked them, what assistance do you think you'll need as they move forward? And this is something I'm hoping, once Bottle Hill Day is over, to kind of focus on, especially the first piece, because I know managed the I Love Madison NJ account for quite some time. Social media marketing is, it changes so rapidly, it's very hard to get a handle on. And once you figure it out, they seem to change the algorithms again. So I think we could all probably benefit from a some kind of a social media marketing, and I'll work with the chamber on this, to whether it's workshops, et cetera. Not sure the best way to go about that. And of course, if any other grant and loan opportunities become, come online, we will absolutely let the businesses know. Okay, we have a lot of things, a lot of programs, et cetera. The DDC and my office sort of in progress that I believe will absolutely continue to improve Madison business community and desirability, et cetera. We are currently working on a gateway and wayfinding program that will next, we'll be meeting with the consultant Wednesday of next week to see their initial concepts, so that's exciting. Recently published, working with New Jersey Monthly, the Experience Madison Magazine, which you should have all received in your mailboxes. Unfortunately, as is the nature of print, the magazine states that the Bottle Hill Beer Garden is happening, which was since canceled, there's no way to correct that, but we will be promoting that in other ways. We have talked about a promotional brochure and video and other opportunities to sort of sell Madison to the world at large as the great place that it is to be, to live, to work. So that's on our agenda. We are talking briefly about potential facade grant program to help small business owners, you know, replace a sign, fix the front of a building, other things that long-term could be of beneficial, of benefit to them. This isn't in the very early stages and would require a lot of steps to figure out funding, et cetera. There are planned parking lot improvements. Both Cook Avenue and Elmer Street will be done in the next few years. There's Waverly Place will be, is scheduled for redevelopment. That probably won't happen for a while, but the plans, and that will be brought to the community in an open town hall process, et cetera, in the coming months, though the project is not scheduled definitively at this point. But the DDC has been working for a number of years, the Public Improvement Committee, on redeveloping the portion of James Park that's adjacent to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. It's a sort of a primary gateway to the downtown, and it is underutilized and certainly not of the, of a caliber that reflects the museum or our downtown as far as landscaping, et cetera. A preliminary concept plan has been developed, the DDC paid for landscape architect to create that. Great plan. Now we just have to figure out how it gets paid for over time. And lots more to come on that. We've also, the DDC's also been talking about an adopt-a-space program or actually making it more official, because right now we have wonderful landscapers who take care of Veterans Park, Frank Davis &amp; Sons, we have J&amp;M Landscaping, who takes care of the Lincoln Island. We have the Oldendorf Group, who takes care of the post office. I mean, we have an adopt-a-space program, but this would be a move to formalize it, open it up to other groups. There's a lot of locations that can be beautified. And I'm hoping, that's been a little slow to get off the ground, but I'm hoping working, because we want to work with Parks Advisory on it as well, that in the new year, that will, I will bring that, we will bring that back to you for further blessing. We will have also, the Arts and Events Committee has been throwing around ideas and looking at concepts for a formal public art plan. Very early stages of development, been slowed a little bit due to the staffing changes at the Director of Arts and Events level, but we will try to move forward on that in the new year. And always, we're always looking to expand arts and entertainment opportunities and programs, because, you know, the more we can do, the more options for people to bring the community, get to bring the community together and to bring people downtown is absolutely essential to having us thrive going forward. This is just a quick run-through of some of the things that are, I think they're both, they can both be challenges and opportunities going forward. You know, I like to think of the, see the glass half-full most of the time. But right now, we are, everybody's trying to navigate the future of corporate real estate. And will people return to work? And if not, what does that mean going forward, especially for Gerald A. Farms? Where we, you know, we have heard that some of the building tenants now are looking at possibly subletting part of their space. But nothing, nothing has come in, and I think part of that challenge is that everybody's in the same boat. Nobody's really looking for big corporate real estate right now until we get to a higher ground on this pandemic and people, you know, until we figure out what the future of work looks like. I don't think we, I just don't think we know that right now. So those, that will be a challenge. All these, oops, all these buildings have different challenges going on. Some of them are empty, some of them, a lot of them have new owners, some of them have turned over more than once in the last couple of years. But thankfully, you have sanctioned the Planning Board to form a subcommittee to look at what Gerald A. could look like in the future as part of the 2020 Master Plan, which is an amazing document. The other thing, we don't know what's going to happen to our local universities. You know, we just, the pandemic has changed the world. And we, we don't know what the other side looks like. But I think that as a community, if we're cognizant of it and willing to work with the universities, I think things should, should look great. Some of them are better at adapting than others. But, you know, that's something that should obviously be on our radar, and I know is. The last, you know, the other thing we don't know is what is the future of commuting going to look like? Right now, it's gotten a lot better in the last month or so. The parking lots are being used, the daily spots are, at least at the train station, are being used. I know we were going to look at some different ways to make sure, we shouldn't have empty pavement. So finding ways to make sure that we increase the use of these lots. And if not, then down the road, what do those lots become? So that's something that definitely is out there and warrants a lot of thoughtful consideration. The other thing is, we have a lot of wonderful investments and redevelopment coming into our downtown. Right now, we have very little commercial availability. And I think, you know, I list pretty much what's open here, those are some of the bigger spaces that are open. But we also have some nice mixed-use residential redevelopment coming. Residential only at Four Community Place, sixteen Waverly, fourteen Lincoln. And just on the, in the early stages, properties on Central and Central Avenue, et cetera, are up for development in different stages. Some of them are, you know, underway, some of them are in progress. That's the same, some of them are in progress, some of them haven't started yet, some of them are in the permitting phase, et cetera. You know, I think overall, that's sort of my presentation in a nutshell. But overall, I think we should be thankful and happy with where we are on, in a period where I'm hoping we are getting close to the end of some of the impacts and of the COVID pandemic. Happy to answer any questions. And, you know, happy to come back in a couple of months and see where we are.
Very nice job, Lisa, really appreciate it, good content in that, really.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, it shows that, you know, it's been a very difficult period, but having you and your position to provide the information and what are the resources that we can have and the strong chamber. I think Madison has been in a much better position than others to weather the storm. You know, as you did mention, the rezoning of Gerald A. Farms, and so we anticipate the committee will be reporting back to the Planning Board in the near future, and we will be seeing ordinances coming to the council shortly. I do want to emphasize, we've heard a lot about it, but the importance of FLAG that started in the Madison-Chatham area and became a nationwide initiative. And what really gets most of the publicity is the fact that, you know, we were feeding the frontline workers during a very difficult time, but one of our delegate test and owners said to me, he doesn't know where they would have been without the income from FLAG. So, you know, they did extra to FoodWise, but it would have been a really difficult time. We might have lost more businesses if we didn't have that program. So it was just, you know, the creativity that comes out during a difficult time is always amazing. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, and as you said, you've got your information right there. Is any residents that have thoughts or questions can reach out to you, and we will continue, whether it's good times or challenging times, continue not to take anything for granted and make this the best possible town.
Sounds good, thank you all, have a good night.
Have a good night, Lisa.
All right, we now move on to ordinances for hearing, where the clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on September the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call it ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, ordinance to the Borough of Madison appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for professional services related to the installation of a new radio system for the police, fire, ambulance, DPW, and electric utility.
I open the hearing for ordinance thirty-nine. Anyone in public wishing to comment on this ordinance, please raise your hand now, this is just on this ordinance. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I'm the ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to our second of invitations for discussion. This is when you make a comment on any topic, same rules apply. When you're called up, please state your name and address, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace. And Claire?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to make a few comments about the Eco Garden Tour, which happened.
Yep, yep, sorry to, even though I recognize you, name and address here.
Oh yeah, Claire Woodcomb, twelve Fairwood Road. Thank you. Any rate, the environmental commission held an Eco Garden Tour and we had a stunning response. I mean, it was just stunning. And I, we talked about it at the MEC meeting and I just wanted to share a few things. The thing that I was just doing registration and trying to stay alive. But like Brian Monahan noticed that people came to his organic lawn care thing and he said, people were asking really informed questions. They weren't just beginners. It was a really big shift from two years ago. Bridget saw people bringing notebooks into her yard. People and, and, and my side yard, there were six environmental groups, you know, the Great Swamp Watershed, Native Plant Society, North American Butterfly Association. And when things started to wind down, I said, well, why don't you go up to the Slackey's house? Because it's so stunning. They have these great gardens. They have beehives. They have a meadow where they, you know, used to have grass and the guy Wade Kirby, the director of development at the Great Swamp said, I'm not leaving. I've had so many people come through. I've had so many substantive conversations. People really wanted information. And I just wanted to point this out to you because I feel like it's a shift. And you know, if we're doing something like adopt a space, how can we have native plants involved? And you know, the, the thirty second speech on why native plants matter is that insects need the, the leaves as food, caterpillars need to chew them, butterflies and need to lay their eggs on them. And so, you know, if you support the insect population, you support the bird population. And Douglas Talamy, who does the Homegrown National Park, theorizes that one of the, if you're a lazy gardener, what you should do is plant a tree. Because trees pollinate at, you know, they flower, you forget that maple trees flower and so on. And an oak tree is, is the king of the, the forest for supporting insects, moths and pollinators. It supports five hundred and thirteen species. And so I just wanted to point out that the thing that we forget about our tree sanctuary, which is the Drew Forest, that it's really a pollinator haven't. And it has, you know, these trees that, that perform an important function and it also nurtures an understory of native plants and you know, tree, an oak tree has roots that can extend for hundreds of miles. So the amount that it does to benefit our aquifer and mitigate flooding, flooding is also really good. So those are my notes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for sharing. It certainly was an amazing day and I think it'll get stronger and better every year. We'll now bring up Hillary Tabish.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Hillary Tabish. I live at one thirty-two on Green Avenue. And I'm a member of the Madison Garden Club and have been informed of the efforts to preserve Drew Forest. So my comments are around that effort. I would like to voice my opinion on the importance of preserving Drew Forest because I think we have a unique opportunity here in Madison to make a difference in decreasing the alarmingly high number of four thousand acres of green space that are being lost daily in the United States due to development. We can do this by working to preserve this beautiful forest that's in our backyard. As we all know, the forest is an asset to the Madison community and its multiple benefits, whether you're admiring it by driving by or actively walking through the arboretum. Among the benefits, this forest is home to so many old growth trees that even with an active reforestation program could never be replaced. And we know that preserving forests mitigates the unstoppable process of climate change that we know to be a growing global problem. Second, regarding wildlife, when a natural ecosystem is destroyed, wildlife is displaced, which would be detrimental to the health of these animals. In addition, those displaced animals could very possibly create a burden on adjacent neighborhoods. Then there's the, the Zuck Arboretum that provides a health benefit to our residents, which I know that for myself as a family of five, we were especially grateful for during COVID. And lastly, the forest has an economic benefit to all property owners in Madison. The presence of nearby natural areas is estimated to increase property values by as much as five and a half percent. So while Drew alumni have been incredibly outspoken about the importance of this green space, their experience to their experience as students, I see the preservation of Drew Forest as our collective responsibility in Madison. I also just wanted to share with you a couple of quotes that were shared on a petition to save the Drew Forest. Holly Goodrich of Madison said, please maintain this jewel at all costs. Chris Thun, also from Madison, said, I believe the natural and beautiful landscape that brought us to live in Madison should be preserved. Bill Hosking of Madison said, the forest is the heart of Drew's campus and its identity. It needs to be preserved and cherished, not destroyed. Lastly, Hannah Arnstein, also of Madison, said, nature is disappearing at an alarmingly high rate in this area. As a Drew alumni and now resident of Madison, I would be devastated that what brought me to the school and this area would no longer exist for me or many generations to come. So I just wanted to include a couple of comments that stuck out to me in that petition. As you know, over nine hundred people have signed this. And I also just wanted to be a new voice to this council to express how important and what an asset I think that this forest is to all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Now we'll bring up Lauren Monopoly.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Lauren Monopoly. I currently live in Illinois, but I graduated from Drew University in twenty eighteen with a degree in environmental studies and sustainability. And I'm also commenting on the Save the Drew Forest initiative. I decided to attend Drew when I was only fifteen years old. My family was moving my older sister into her dorm, but where they were focused on ensuring all her belongings were in place, I was focused on the trees. Although I always had a deep fascination with the environment, that August morning was the first time I ever stepped foot into a forest. I was in complete awe, so I made a promise to myself that day that I would study at Drew University and I did just that. I originally wanted to pursue a career in atmospheric chemistry, but in my second semester freshman year, I had the opportunity to work in Zuck Arboretum. It took less than an hour for me to change career paths and instead focus on studying ecology. For the remainder of my undergraduate career, I was actively involved in the restoration of Zuck Arboretum and Heppurn Woods. I even took part in a long-term and still ongoing research project examining the small mammal populations located on campus. To this day, I know of no other graduate student in my field that had the opportunities I did while attending Drew University. And I know exactly why this is, the forest located directly on campus. Having been involved in the scientists at Drew, I know the preserves are more than just a place to seek comfort. They are also a lab. It was in those forests that I learned how to do water quality testing, spent many afternoons both measuring and identifying tree species. And on one occasion even tested whether smell was used by birds for foraging purposes. All of these were labs. When I learned about the petition started by Save the Drew Forest, it wasn't even a question of whether I would sign. I had to sign the petition for all the current and future students studying at Drew University who rely on the preserves for their education and the many research experiences they offer. I know that if it weren't for that fateful afternoon working in Zuck Arboretum my freshman year and the many amazing experiences that preceded it, I wouldn't be in the position I am today, a PhD student in natural resources studying marshberg conservation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Lauren, for sharing your experience and congratulations on your career path and your extended education. And now we bring up Tom Harrenputis again. Welcome, Tom.
Hello again, Mayor and Council, Tom Harrenputis, twenty-seven Palmeroy Road. I just want to give a quick thank you to the Director of Business Development, Lisa Ellis. That was a very thorough presentation. We did hear it at our Rotary meeting also a few weeks ago and it's very promising that we have a, a committee in town or a director who gives so much attention to making sure that the downtown's thriving, although there is a lot of work to be done. I was a little surprised to hear that the Waverly Plaza development might be delayed a little bit. I hope that it's not. I think we have to really focus on doing a lot for our, improving our infrastructure and our streetscape. If you all travel a little bit out of the borough, which you probably do to other towns around us and east, you go to Summit, you go to Maplewood, although they've been devastated now, then head east towards Jersey City, Hoboken, New York City, you'll see how much emphasis those areas have given to the retailers having additional space outside. And then all of a sudden, there's a lot more people attending and we need to be able to be, to be able to give that opportunity. And I, I, I know that I'm a merchant in town, so I'm not saying this just for my benefit. I want to see the whole town focus on giving us a real walking environment for the community. Besides that, Mayor Ray, you didn't really answer my question before about this appropriation of a hundred forty thousand dollars. I, I asked you why we are not trying to get money from the trustees. I appreciate the fact that they want to spend money on adding lighting outside. They could spend a million dollars and I would be thrilled with that. But this money that's being spent now additionally, it's a thirteen percent overage to, to your project. And I know that happens with projects. It's still a lot of money that's coming out of our capital account. Can they participate? I don't know. Would you like to have somebody from the community help you to reach out to them? Ask us. But in any event, it's a lot of money. And it should be spent. If that's what needs to be done, I don't want you to do the project in a way that it's not sufficiently done, like you suggested. It has to be good for the next forty or fifty years or however long the building's going to be around. But to share the expense, when that's their charter, I, I think they should be approached and we could definitely use that money for a lot of other spending options in the borough. Another thing that I want to bring up, which is a little bit of a spending option, and this pertains to all of you on council and the mayor. I wanted to know if there's ever been a discussion for all of you to receive some kind of stipend for your time participating as council people and you as the mayor. We know that besides a couple of meetings a month at night, which is maybe your personal time, you do spend time during the day, which takes away from your family, your productivity at work or whatever it would, would be that you'd be spending that time for. And I don't think that that is asking too much from the community to compensate you a little bit for being on council. Besides your free parking and hopefully a couple of snacks in your executive meeting, you probably could be given some other monies just to, 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 to compensate you, like I said, for the time that you put in. So hopefully you'll have that discussion. And I'd be happy to reiterate it again in another meeting. Another thing I asked you about, I asked Councilwoman Bailey and you, Mayor, and I think Jim Burnett, I don't remember who else was on it about
One, one minute.
Nope. Oh, come on now, Mayor. There's no way that you can give me four minutes to talk to you about a bunch of things when I haven't talked to you for two weeks. You know that I can't be that, that brief. It's impossible. I'm at.
I, 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 I understand, Tom, but I, I'm not going to count your thirty seconds there, but so one, one, one minute, one, one minute from that.
Next quick thing I brought up that we need to promote more no idling zones in the borough. The school district has sent a message out to all of the parents in the community telling us that we are not allowed to idle around any school facilities, whether it's fields or the buildings. I think the same should apply to a lot of areas in the borough. The one that we're acting site very quickly now is just a train station. Either get there on time to pick up. If it's cold, go there with a coat. If it's warm, don't get there early because you can't just sit there with your car and the pollution that comes out of cars is detriment. It's terrible pollution from an idling car. The next thing I wanted to talk about was shared services. I don't believe you've had a meeting recently, shared services with the Board of Ed. I wanted to know what's the status of them potentially moving to Hartley Dodge and that also leads into what is the potential for the development of the East Wing in Hartley Dodge. I see you shaking your head, Mayor. And the last thing, one more minute. The last thing is you're probably tired of seeing that futon mattress in front of one of my rental properties, Mayor. I think we need to talk about privatizing our waste removal in the borough because we haven't been getting the best service from the company that's been winning the contract since I probably lived in town. So.
Okay. And, and, and that is time. Yep. So let, let, let me try to adjust, address some of these items. Beverly, Beverly Place, while we're going through this whole process and we're interviewing landscape architects, I, I think we will be, you know, we were ambitious with a twenty twenty-two construction timeframe, e- even without doing this step and without the public input, which would, would not be good, we, that would have been tough to hit that. So we, we do believe that we'll be able to do this process in the last quarter of this year and then, and go into design in twenty twenty-two and be out on the street with bids in twenty twenty-three for the reconstruction at that point. And it might have been lost in Ray's explanation, but fifty-six thousand, so half of the change order is being paid for by the the, the trustees, the, the trust for the people that know that Geraldine Dodge establishes its trust when she gave the building to the borough. They have only one customer. They can only spend their money on Hartley Dodge. And so that's, they will continue, they have been and they will be continuing to provide that that support. And we were looking, we're working very closely with with the trustees for that support. Your suggestion of a stipend for our elected officials, you and I have had a conversation with this. I, I think it's something that the council should take a look at at some point. It's getting more and more difficult to get people to commit. And the reality is if you were elected official, whether it's a borough council or or Board of Ed or at, at any level, it actually costs you money to serve because you're spending to be at every possible event and to help offset some of that would, would be a good idea. It would be my recommendation, should the, should we take this up that it, it gets phased in so in essence, that sitting elected officials aren't giving themselves money, that it's given over time, that the future council and future mayor are taking care of with a stipend. We are working quite a bit on, you know, creation of no idling zones. The, the reality is the whole state is no idling zone by state law. It's just a matter of communication and you were right about the train station and other areas. We, we need to communicate and, and do the right thing. Shared services, the Board of Ed has done a, a thorough analysis of the potential of moving to East Wing. So that will be a result of that. Recommendations will be shared at appropriate time. We are working with them. Shared service meets on a quarterly basis, but in between quite a bit happens i- i- in the, in that realm. So and related to garbage, well, actually, I think what you're suggesting is the reverse from privatized to take it in-house. Currently it is a contract that goes out and some towns have it covered by DPW. That's always a, you know, there's pluses and minuses on both sides and we'll continue to look at it and you know, certainly when a hauler does not live up to expectations, just like any other contractor, we need to hold them to the contract they sign. So I, I, I hear your pain. And we will now bring up Suzanne. Again, since we just see your first name, please state your full name and again, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a one minute grace.
Okay, this is Suzanne Schreiber, nine Amelia Court in Madison. I just wanted to add to comments that Hillary and some of the others have made about Drew Forest. Over the past couple of months, I've had the pleasure of getting to know the friends of the Drew Forest and the effort to save the Drew Forest. And I have a true appreciation that we have a forest in Madison, New Jersey, which is pretty amazing. This precious resource for trees, wildlife, two ponds, has returning native birds and indigenous trees. I'll try to make Sarah Webb and Judy Kroll proud because they did an excellent job of giving our group a tour. And our group was able to see amazing things like a heron and an egret again in, in Madison, New Jersey. And most importantly, we got to see the immense value that the forest provides. And I would say, especially after Hurricane Ida, think drainage and water and these huge storms. The forest is a critical recharge area for the Buried Valley Aquifer, which is a major source of drinking water for twenty-six municipalities of, that are in four different counties. The forest naturally filters and purifies the water and the air. And to lose the forest could mean traffic and increased impervious And to lose the forest could mean traffic and increased impervious cover. The forest now provides us with relief from the heat island effect that pavement and buildings only increase. And one of the facts we were quoted was one acre of forest provides oxygen for eighteen people to breathe. One acre of forest offsets a car being driven twelve thousand miles, and that's only one acre. We're talking about fifty-three acres. So I would say, please ask your friends, your neighbors, your fellow New Jersey residents to help with this important effort. Sign the petition and let's save the Drew Forest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. Very good comment. Anyone else wishing me heard, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to interactive ordinances. Will a clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, October the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Has a borough clerk to read said ordinance by title, forty dash twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for water and light plant building repairs and improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any council discussion? Part of the capital budget. A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, call up ordinance forty-one, S twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating fifty thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for retrofit kits for LED bulbs for the Victorian lamp posts.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty-one dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And Councilwoman Erlich already explained this in her report, but any other comments? A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
And we now move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will a clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
And Resolution two sixty-two will be not part of the consent that will be read into the record and then moved and discussed.
Mayor, I move Resolution two forty-seven dash twenty twenty-one to two sixty-one dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
A discussion or any of that need to be pulled?
I just want to confirm that's the one we discussed that we were going to pull. That I just don't have that number in front of me. That was from tonight.
That's two or two sixty-two.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Stowe.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, and now I have Resolution two sixty-two read by, you know, the title and also the full resolution.
Mayor, why don't I take that? I have a, I think, a marked-up copy. Resolution two sixty-two, there's twenty twenty-one, resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing a tasting and bear beer sales for off-site consumption by Untied Brewing Company at Bottle Hill Day, October second, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the limited brewery license holder, Untied Brewing Company LLC of New Providence, New Jersey, has requested permission to hold a beer tasting and beer sales for off-site consumption at Dodge Field on Bottle Hill Day, Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one, whereas the borough's council has agreed that a beer tasting and bear seals may be held at Dodge Field with the following specific conditions. One, Untied Brewing Company LLC must adhere to all ABC regulations and secure all required state permits. Two, the event must be advertised as a beer tasting and not a beer garden. Three, serving cups must be five ounces or smaller. Four, customers are limited to one taste per variety of beverage. Five, only twenty patrons or the appropriate number identified for the space may be allowed within the fenced-in area at a given time. Six, products such as growlers are permitted by ABC regulations and cans may be sold for home consumption only. Customers should be reminded that open containers are not permitted at the tasting or in any public space. Seven hours of service are limited to the Bottle Hill Day hours, ten AM to five PM. Eight, no seating tables or recreational activities are allowed. Nine, the vendor shall provide proof of host liability insurance coverage in a minimum amount of one million dollars, naming the borough as additional named insured. Ten, if the event, in the event of a material violation of the above referenced rules, the activity herein the activity will be closed by the Madison Police Department without warning. And now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris and State of New Jersey that Untied Brewing Company shall be permitted to operate a beer tasting at Dodge Field on Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one, subject to such restrictions or conditions as may be required herein and or by the Madison Chief of Police or his designate. Adopted and approved, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one, Robert H. Conley, Mayor.
Can I have a motion for Resolution two sixty-two?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll move Resolution two sixty-two.
And you'll have a second.
Second.
Martin, Maury, okay. All right, and just a little additional background before we go into discussion, that should be noted that the DDC has a prior action canceled the beer garden at May Day due to concerns about the, particularly the Delta variant of COVID nineteen, that a large gathering within a fenced-in area with people not really moving around and inability to wear masks would not be prudent at this stage. It's hope hope is to have that come back in another year. So this resolution makes it clear that this is a tasting and is not a gathering point for large crowds in a fenced-in area, but enables a vendor who's been part of our farmer's market to promote their their beers and sell their product as permitted by law. It also is a, you know, helps promote New Jersey businesses. Any further discussion? Deb?
I struggle a little bit with this. I've expressed this prior. I'm concerned mostly about enforcement of the number of people in one of each type. I realize that our police department is great and they circulate around, but who's going to keep an eye on it to make sure it's twenty and not twenty-one or twenty-two or even more potentially? And that people are kind of moving on and it's not, and then for, you know, it's not becoming a gathering spot with people hanging just outside the fence and regardless. And while it is less than what the DDC beer garden would be, I still worry about the number of people in close quarters drinking and with, without masks on.
Austria?
Yes, I have to agree with Ms. Cohen today that there are just too many conditions I'm concerned about.
And any other, Maureen?
No, I, I think, given the conditional restrictions that we're imposing, it's the vendor is a, is a farmer's market vendor, and this is what they do with the farmer's market, so. I have, I'll be voting for it.
Any other comments? And I see hands raised, you know, audience, I apologize that the comment periods are limited by laws and to the two comment periods we have already. I do not get a vote, and since we have an absentee, even if it it's not, may not end in a tie, so I probably won't get a vote, but I would be supportive of this because you know, certainly, these are very clear guidelines. A business wants to be successful, and this is a business that's been part of our farmer's market for extended time and hopefully, as Humphrey Bogart would say in Casablanca, a continuation of a great relationship. Any other comments? Hey, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
No.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
No.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, the resolution carries. We will be sharing a copy of this resolution with the vendor tomorrow. Also, as we understand right now, the actual license, that the overall control of this, it falls with the ABC. They may or may not, as of earlier this afternoon, it had not been issued. We will be sharing this resolution with the ABC so that if it has not been issued, it will be part of the licensing, which adds another level of gravity to violations, because violation on a liquor license can be a major setback for a business. Right, there is no unfinished business. So will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
For the current fund, four million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seven cents. For the general capital fund, two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents. For the electric operating fund, seven hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. The electric capital fund, three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. For the water operating fund, sixty-two thousand, seventy-one dollars, forty-nine cents. And for the trust, fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. The total is five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
And under new business, I'd like to request the following appointment and ask for council confirmation. Creation Advisory Committee, Amy Gavin, Greenwood Avenue, as the Girls Across Representative, one year unexpired from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The current representative has stepped aside and recommended Amy Gavin to replace her. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and now we're on to adjournment. Rachel?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and that we, for those that in the audience that have stayed to the end, we will see you at Bottle Hill Day on Saturday. Take care and be well.